I'm going for it.
Call of May 20, 2019, Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting Order, the clerk will call the roll.
Borwitz, Brereton.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
Stand for the Pledge Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the words of Stans, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings we receive each and every day. Help us to appreciate small kindnesses received and given and the beauty of the world around us and the people in it. Spring has given us a kaleidoscope of brilliant colors to admire and welcome. Let us realize that the circle of seasons affords us new opportunities and a fresh canvas upon which to write our community legacy. As our city council gathers this evening, we invite the presence of your guiding hand as we conduct the city of Belvidere's business. Help us to walk the pathway to honest and fair decisions that serve the common good and heed the voices of our citizens. These things we ask in your holy name, amen.
Welcome, everyone. Under Public Comment this evening, we have no one registered to visit with us. Under Approval of Minutes Number Four A, Approval of Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Belvidere City Council of May 6, 2019 is presented. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing not all the, oh, yes, Alderman Burton.
I think somebody's missing from present on the roll call.
Okay. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Burton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Minutes are approved as presented. Next, under Number Five, Public Hearing, we have none this evening, which brings us to Number Six, Special Messages and Proclamations. Under Item A, need a motion to approve the Alderman Committee Appointments. Motion by Snow, second by Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Yes, Alderman Frank.
I just wanted to add that I'm on there as a Boone County Council on aging as well.
Okay. These are just for our meetings, but you've done a good job over there, so no reason, you want to stay there, don't you? Cool, thank you. Okay, yes, Alderman Porter.
Yeah, just one of these days I'd like to get on the Public Safety Committee if possible because I, that's kind of my thing.
Okay, we'll take that under advisement, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Committee Appointments are approved unanimously, which brings us to B, Planning and Zoning Commission, Appointment of Daniel Rivelow as Chairman. He was elected by the other members of the board and forwarded us for our approval. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second, by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
No.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
No.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Okay, motion is passed. Next up, under Number Seven, we have Approval of Expenditures for the Month. Under General and Special Fund Expenditures, we had expenditures of $2,232,092.12. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Snow. Questions or comments concerning any of these expenditures? Yes, Alderman Freeman.
I just wanted to ask Chief Woody, the Tri-City Auto Service did a lot of programmable timers, and I talked to them and they said that we didn't have any in our squads, so what they do is, um, once an officer shuts the car down, they have anywhere from 30 seconds to 10 hours to get the stuff downloaded. So is that going to help with them not having to always leave the squads idling all the time, like wear and tear that way?
Yeah, that's exactly why we're going ahead and doing the additional expense, so hopefully they can shut the vehicles down and they don't have to continuously keep them idling. So it'll cut down on wear and tear and should prolong the life of the vehicles.
Good deal. Additional questions or comments on this month's expenditures? Hearing none, all those in favor, approval, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
General and Special Fund Expenditures are approved unanimously, which brings us to Water and Sewer Fund Expenditures of $629,545.17. May I have a motion to approve these expenditures? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions or comments concerning these expenditures? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Water and Sewer Fund Expenditures are approved unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next, under Number Eight, Committee Reports and Minutes of City Officers. Please note that Items A through L have been received and placed on file, which brings us to Item M, Minutes of the Committee of the Whole Building, Planning, and Zoning and Public Works of May 13, 2019. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Alderman Porter, second, by Alderman Brereton. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Under Number Nine, Unfinished Business, there is none this evening. Takes us to Number Ten, New Business. Items A through E are first readings, which are silent readings, but for our folks at home that are watching on television, I read them into the record for their benefit. A is Ordinance 454H, a first reading, an ordinance amending subdivision two, inspector of Division Two, administrator of Article Four, plumbing of Chapter 22 of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code. Item B is Ordinance 455H, a first reading, an ordinance amending Section 74-258 and 74-259 of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code. C is Ordinance 456H, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Belvidere and Bell Rock Services LLC. D is Ordinance 457H, a first reading, an ordinance granting zoning district change from rural holding to general industrial district at 2054 and 2136 Graham Road. Item E is Ordinance 458H, a first reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow outdoor storage within the general industrial district, again at 2054 and 2136 Graham Road. Which brings us to motions forwarded from Committee of the Whole Building, Planning, and Zoning and Public Works of May 13, 2019. Public Works motions were presented by Chairman Freeman. Chairman Freeman?
Thank you. A, motion to approve the low bid from Dorner Company in the amount of $33,683 for the rebuilding or replacement of identified valves at well number three and well number eight.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
B, motion to approve the low bid from Standard Equipment Company in the amount of $395,817 for a 2020 Vector 21200I. This work will be paid for from sanitary sewer depreciation funds.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
C, motion to approve the low bid from Dock Fence Company in the amount of $9,155 for the installation of a six-foot chain-link fence around the Highline Lift Station property. This work will be paid for from sanitary sewer depreciation funds.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is passed unanimously.
D, motion to approve the proposal from Fairgram Wood in an amount not to exceed $48,370 for completing a storm water utility feasibility study for the City of Belvidere. This work will be paid for from capital project funds.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, further discussion? Alderman Frank?
You, sir. I would like to know from Brent what the difference is between this study that we want to do from the, um, one that we previously had done by Baxter Woodman.
The study that was done by Baxter Woodman, the South Side Storm Sewer Study, was a study done on the, the physical plant that we have for storm sewer, for a conveyance system for handling storm water runoff, and the amount of runoff calculated for the area that it serves, and looking for areas that, of improvement that could improve the drainage down there. The storm water utility study that's before you tonight is to, a feasibility study to determine if you want to create a storm water utility, the same as what we currently have, a water utility and a sanitary sewer utility. By this study, the feasibility, this would perhaps enable the city to establish a storm water utility. It has, it does not have anything to do with the physical pipes in the ground and, other than allow for your, um, funding mechanism for capital improvements, to do improvements to your system, but it is to establish a storm water, a separate utility for storm water.
It's a method to start to pay for $42 million worth of improvements that would be, under today's standards, what they recommend for our storm water protection?
I'm just wondering if that would create more trouble for the people that already have trouble, you know, by creating another burden for them?
I'm not sure, it's not, when you say burden, the utility, yes, you're gonna, you're gonna establish a fee system, um, to pay for operation, maintenance, and improvements to your storm water system. Same way as you have a fee system in place to pay for your water system and your sanitary sewer system, everybody pays based on the usage. The feasibility study for the storm water utility would establish your parameters and give you processes and possibilities for how a fee system, what kind of structure that would be, and what that would cost, and you'll be able to see what kind of burden, what kind of expense that will be to the residents, and then you'll have to make that determination if you want to move forward. But it, as far as an additional burden on those properties affected by flooding conditions, no, it's going to be, um, long-term, it would hopefully be a benefit to those properties because you'll have an additional revenue source to help pay for the capital improvements that will be required to help alleviate those flooding conditions in those areas.
And the study may come back to us and show that it's not a feasible thing to do. We looked at some other communities that have been beleaguered by the same kind of problems that we have when we have these 500-year rains every three years, and there is significant flooding. You know, it, it's obvious, um, the reason we had Baxter Woodman do the study, so we knew what we were really talking about, you know, cost-wise. $42 million isn't anything that we can bite off and chew. Even in small, smaller amounts like $5 million a year, I mean, there just isn't the funding to do those things. So what you try to do is then see what are other communities doing to address the same situation that we have. And so we had eight different companies that we reached out to, uh, they came and made presentations, I think, what, the top five, three, and made presentations, and after they made a presentation to the board, uh, and some of the Aldermen were included in that, um, we settled on Fairgram, and this was to find out if it's even feasible for us to approach solving the problem incrementally, a little bit at a time. In some of the places that we looked at, um, the typical charge for a storm water utility can, can range anywhere from $2 to $8, depending on the use and the amount of impervious surface that you're contributing to the runoff. So for us to understand how that really looks for the community is the reason to look at the study. If we don't fund the study, we won't know, and the reality is that we'll just go on the way we are, because there's no way that we can afford to spend millions of dollars every year to address the problem. And, um, so, long-term, Alderman Porter, go ahead. Well, long-term, what happens when this study is in progress is they'll hold several town hall meetings to meet with the public, um, to answer questions and be very straightforward about what they're doing and, and what it looks like. I would suspect that the end game for this is that it'll go to referendum, and my preference would be not an advisory referendum, a referendum on the ballot, so that the community can actually vote whether they want to embrace this to be a mechanism that we can use to start to interdict the problems that we have with storm water management, or they don't. Because in the end, it then tells us that if they do not want to, we can't fix it. I mean, we have a program now where we're spending money every year to try to attack one thing or another, we bought some property, we're creating more detention areas, so we're just working with what we can within our budget as it is, that's nowhere near the amount of money that would take to tackle this over five years or 10 years. So, uh, the idea is just get all the facts, see what it would take to fix it, find out what it would look like cost-wise for the average citizen on their additional charge on their water and sewer bill. And so before anything would ever happen concerning that, as I said, there would be town hall meetings, we may request that it gets put on, uh, the ballot the next election as a referendum, so the citizens make up their mind, and it may never get past this council. If they come back with feasibility study and you all say, you know, no, that's not anything we want to do, you guys are the ones that have the votes. So, talk to the people, you know, and I would recommend that we do it so we know where we stand. Outside of that, all we're gonna do is every time we have a 500-year rain every three years, we're gonna have the same people troop it in here who don't have the money to waterproof their house appropriately, we're gonna have flooding on East Avenue, we're gonna have flooding in the low-lying areas, because when you have that much rain in that, in a short period of time, I don't care if you have, we've used this example before, 72-inch pipes, we're still gonna have some flooding that will subside after the rain quits, but to try to alleviate and keep people's houses from flooding, we've tried to devise ways to help them with that, and we know storm water pumped into the sanitary sewer causes sanitary sewer to back up, so we have a program for that. So it's all part and parcel of us trying to find an economical way to help the citizens, but it is ultimately up to the council and the citizens if we decide to go to a referendum. If you guys approve, you know, go on ahead with this, but this, this is the beginning. So, Alderman Porter?
Well, that actually answered my question, I was gonna ask about getting it on a referendum, so that answered the question.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Frank?
Thank you. So would this be something that would go on forever? I mean, it would, it would be there for the duration forever?
Well, let's say it's $5 a month for the average citizen, and we have, what, 7,700 households?
Well, it would, it would be, it would be an ongoing here on out until the council, I guess, decided otherwise, but if you establish a utility, same as a water and sewer, once you, once you do that, and now you're gonna fund your storm water system and your, and maintaining and operating that system as we currently do now, we fund that through the general fund, through part of the street department budget, so once you establish that fee structure, and now that fee structure, those payments can only be applied to the storm water system, um, so that's gonna be an ongoing entity, just like your water department, just like your sanitary sewer department.
Those payments are never available to the general fund, they're in their own sinking fund. Alderman Snow?
On that note, if we knew we were gonna charge, what'd you say, $10 a year per resident, then you can go out, in theory, and have a funding source for getting a bond and pay for the structure, but once that bond is paid off, we could reduce it drastically unless we had other significant issues that we were gonna have to rebond or pay off, or stuff that might come up in the meantime.
Well, keep in mind, probably 40% of the city is without storm sewer system right now. So, kind, storm sewer systems kind of go hand in hand with curb and gutter and full urban improvements, and we've probably still got 35 to 40% of our streets mileage with no curb and gutter. Now, some of those areas have storm drain, but that storm drain is, you know, we've got storm drain that's probably close, you know, 100 years old or older, um, so there's always that ongoing maintenance, so there's that ongoing maintenance work that needs to be done. In addition, um, we're part of the NPDS program through state and federal regulations for the IEPAs, and those regulations keep getting stricter and stricter, so there's more and more things that have to be done on an annual basis that adds additional cost and work items that we have to take care of, and right now, general fund is absorbing those things. So, in theory, you're right, you could reduce it, um, if you think there's a big project coming up, and there, and there's about 30, I'd say there's probably between 30 and 40 stormwater utilities that have been established in the state of Illinois right now, and those range anywhere from $2 a month to almost $30 a month, and that all depends on what their capital improvement needs are. That one that's close to $30 a month, yeah, they have a mega, much more expensive program in place than what we were even looking at, um, that they need to, that they need to address. So certainly, it's feasible, but over time, you're gonna have not only, like I said, you've got a lot of the city that doesn't have any storm sewer that you'd, you'll eventually be putting storm sewer in, um, but you'll have those areas that you're gonna have to redo and upgrade and fix, including what's already been identified on the South Side.
So, you make a good point about going out to bond. Well, when you go out to bond, you pay an enormous amount of interest in the process of doing that, and, you know, we have approximately, and I'd be happy to go into a long-winded thing with you, if you want to come meet me in my office, we have about $150 million worth of improvements that need to be done to this city, between bridges, streets, storm water retention, all of those things. We don't, we're never gonna have that kind of money. We couldn't afford the bond payments, couldn't afford the interest payments. So, the idea was just simply, let's look and see what other people are doing that makes it affordable, and if it was an additional, you know, I can only speak for myself, if it's another $10 a month that I have to pay so that we can get better storm water management, I'm happy with doing that. Not everybody's gonna be happy doing that. Um, a lot of people don't want to pay one penny more for anything else, but at the same time, that's how we got where we are. That's why we have streets without curb and gutter, and we don't have a storm management system, and we don't have the streets the way that we'd like to have the streets, because everything costs money, and, you know, if you don't, and yet, the same people who seem to want to holler and scream about more money, and I get where they're coming from, are the same ones that holler and scream about the infrastructure, and about the street, and about the curb, and about the storm water. So, you know, it's, it's, at this point, it's an exploration of finding out what the recommendation would be, and there is a cost to doing this, you saw the cost, it's not cheap to do this study, but, um, we won't know unless we find out what it might look like, and they may come back to us and say, you know what? Here are your options, which one do you think is doable? Alderman Snow?
And along those lines, as far as asking for a referendum to approve or disapprove, my understanding of referendums is, we as a city, um, may get it on the ballot, but we can't use taxpayer money to promote voting yes for it. We can have informational things, but we can't expend money to pursue voting for. So, the issue I would have in, um, in that is that people on the South Side are probably gonna need to organize, just like when the school district tries to push a bond through and they get a whole bunch of people go door knocking to get everybody to vote yes, they're gonna have to do the same thing, because the people on the North Side are the places that aren't gonna be affected by all this infrastructure need, are gonna vote, no, I don't want my taxes to go up. So, just a thought that people need to be aware of, that if...
And thank you for that, but there are issues on the North Side too, with streets that need curb and gutter. The North Side is not perfect.
But our biggest issue right now is the South Side, and that's where the bulk of it...
The biggest issue is the South Side, because we all know it was built on a wetland, and it has clay soil, and it doesn't have storm sewers, and, you know, it's years and years and years of one mistake after another that was started 70 years ago, and now we have to fix everything, and it's tough to do in today's economies. Yes, Brent?
I was just gonna say, but again, it's not, this is not a tax, it is not, despite what, what, I think we had a local legislator that, that calls it the rain tax, it is not a tax, it is a fee-based system, and that's another thing that will be looked at through this feasibility study, is to come up with a basis for the establishment of that fee. It's, it's no different than your water utility and your sanitary sewer utility and the rates that are... that are, are paid through those utilities.
Yes?
Under I, the water sewer, it's called the proprietary bond, it's almost a government's form of doing their best to provide a service for the, this would be considered proprietary bond, just like water sewer, and not fully those general funds. Can we buy it back and forth? You can't take it away and use it for something else, you have to say there.
There are a lot stricter rules these days from the federal government about how money, cities can use taxpayers' money. Yes, Alderman Porter? Thank goodness.
So when you, when you say it can't be used for anything else, so you couldn't use it for like a equipment for the sewer department, like a truck or something like that?
You would use it, you would use it for equipment if it was gonna be for the storm sewer department? Yes, you could do that. You could, you could use it for personnel, you could do, use it for computers for management, overseeing that, that department, just like you do for water. Water has the vehicles, you just approved a purchase of a jet truck tonight that's used by the sewer department and the water department for that. Same thing with the storm sewer, if there's a, if it gets, you know, who knows, twenty years from now, thirty years from now, maybe the storm sewer department's got three, three employees, four employees in there, and that's all they do is storm sewers. That could happen. But it's just like a water department or the sewer department, you could look at it that way. Right now, we have, you know, the water sewer, you pay one bill, but yet, we have a, we have the water, and we have the sanitary sewer collection, and we have the sanitary sewer at the wastewater treatment plant, so we've got that broken down in those areas. So again, you can identify and fund those types of activities for the storm sewer system.
Additional questions or comments? We need to really ask all the questions now, and before we vote on whether or not to go ahead with this study, which will tell us and recommend us the different avenues we can pursue to try to parcel out this cost over time to solve, solve the problem. Anybody else have anything else tonight? Yes, Alderman Freeman?
So, my fifth ward is disproportionately affected by this flooding. Clayton and Tom's wards are pretty bad, too. I really don't need Fair Graham to tell me that we need this, because it's a no-brainer to me, I don't really feel like we have a choice, but if it's going to help explain to the rest of the council what we need and why we need this, you know, I'm all for it.
I was gonna say, the biggest thing that, in my mind, the fees, the benefit of the feasibility study is to establish the fee structure that's gonna be there, and how that fee structure would operate, how it's gonna be best for an implementation, along with our water and sewer bills that we already generate, how we can implement those together. It'll look at that, and again, determine that feasibility, and what's that best method to do that, and it will provide the information that I think the council's gonna need ultimately to make the decision if they want to move forward, with what kind of charges are you gonna be looking at, what kind of revenue predictions they're gonna have for generation in order for you then to gauge how much revenue's gonna be needed to do X amount of projects and work, because we already know we've got forty-two million identified on the South Side, we've got millions on the North Side that have to be done where there is no storm sewer. So you're, you're gonna have a big range there, and the feasibility, feasibility study will then enable you guys to see exactly what kind of impact the residents will have at what cost, and you, then you'll be able to have that informed decision when it comes time to do that, if you approve going forward with this feasibility study.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
No.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Six in favor?
Motion is carried.
Moving on to E. Motion to approve the block party request of Yoxie Guzman of eight-nine-three Fuller Lane on July twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. Barricades will be placed on Fuller Lane from Whitbeck to Russell.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the block party? Hearing none, all those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Well, Mr. Yoxie Guzman is gonna have a party. Nine in favor?
F, motion to approve the block party request of James Rogers of five-twenty East Pleasant Street on June eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Barricades will be placed on Warren Avenue from East Pleasant to East Locust.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
No.
Eight in favor?
Okay. Motion is approved. Thank you, Chairman Freeman. Next up, we have public safety motions prevented, presented by Chairman Crawford, Chairman Crawford.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to approve and accept the State of Illinois grant for eighty-six thousand two hundred and eighty dollars for the purchase of fifteen squad car cameras.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Chairman Crawford. Next up, we have finance motions presented by Chairman Radcliffe. Chairman Radcliffe?
Thank you, Your Honor. H, motion to approve and accept a neighborhood grant in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars for trees, shrubs, and flowers to be planted at General Mills Park.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved, which brings us to number eleven, adjournment for the evening.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman McGee. Anybody have any questions or comments? In that case, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now adjourned. Thank you.